So, the people that carry guns in the back parking, they send them here on this side?
Hey, Sherry or Jim Foster, can you guys hear me okay? Thank you, Sherry.
All right, welcome everyone. We'd like to call this meeting to order. Everyone will rise and join me in the pledge. The council has their agendas before them. Is there a motion that we approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion we approve the agenda. I'll second.
All those in favor? Are there any announcements this evening?
You don't have anything. Do you have anything?
There'll be a blood drive in this room tomorrow from eight to five P.M. Correct me if I'm wrong, Nicole.
I thought she said eleven to three, or nine to three.
Yes, eleven to three P.M. tomorrow.
All right, public comments almost submitted via email. And we'll read that first, and then we have some in-person sign up.
The first one is from Deborah Dobson. She says, hello, I've been a regular walker in the park now for three years. And this morning I was driving in, as I was driving in, a rabbit near the dog park suddenly dashed across the entrance road to the park. Fortunately, I was driving slowly enough to break in time, so she didn't get hit. Sadly, though, this has not been the case for other rabbits who live in the park. In fact, over the past three months, three rabbits have been hit by vehicles and killed, which is an average of one rabbit per month. This could be easily prevented by either placing speed limit signs and/or speed bumps along the entrance way. Mills River Park is probably one of the most eco-friendly parks in the area. There are solar panels on the buildings now. The metal surrounds for the drainage grates remind passerby that the water drains into the river. And there are a number of birdhouses scattered all around the grounds. It's important that we humans who visit Mills River, or any park for that matter, remember that we are just that, visitors. We do not live there, but other living creatures do call it their home, and we need to respect that. There are many rabbits who apparently live in the thick growth of trees across from the dog park, who should be able to cross the pavement safely without fear of getting killed. I sincerely hope that county council will take this to heart when considering the park budget. If you can erect a brand-new baseball field, place solar panels on the buildings, and are preparing to expand facilities near the large walking track, please consider doing something to protect the rabbits who live there. Thank you, Deborah Dobson. This one is from Joanne Rogers. To whom it may concern, my name is Joanne, and I am a concerned citizen of the Mills River area. I'm wondering if a decision has been made regarding the new noise ordinance up for consideration this month. I'm a lover of music and entertainment, and I am so worried about how this noise ordinance will impact the new and growing businesses in the area. Among other places like Bold Rock or Burning Blush, who offer live outdoor music, my husband and I spend our free time enjoying these atmospheres so close to home. We used to travel all the way to Asheville for major events, and we love to see Mills River holding its own these days. The area has so much to offer, and I truly believe a noise ordinance dictating the use of amplified sound would severely dampen the increased tourism and revenue to the area. My hope is that as Mills River grows and changes, we as a community can learn to adapt and even to love change as it happens. I hope that this email does not come too late, and I hope that you will consider it. The spirit of Mills River has a vibrant and healthy future, and I would like to see it continue that way. Thank you for your time. I do have a few others, but they're specific to one of the public hearings.
Okay, so in person, first on the sign up is Carl Hill. If you'll step to the podium, Mr. Hill, and introduce yourself for the minutes.
Thank you, Council and Mayor. My name is Carl Hill, and I live 31 Country Drive, about two-hundred-and-fifty yards away from the proposed development. And my concern, I've got two concerns, but the first one is safety. And I'm sure, thank you, I'm sure you've done your math, and you know the amount of cars that will be coming egress and ingress. And so, well over two-hundred. And you know the route, you know the school, you know the widening that's going to have to take place at the four-way stop and lights to be put in there. You know how crooked that road is. You know all of these things. You know the bridge and how narrow the bridge is, and yet we're going to put at least two-hundred more cars on there. It's like putting ten pounds of flour in a five-pound sack. Just, you can only bottleneck so much. So, my concern is safety. For the people that live there, the kids. I had a son, twenty-five-years-old, that died in a truck accident on Davenport Bridge. So, I'm very in tune with safety, with auto safety. And so, we can't afford to lose any more of our young people. But anyway, so you're aware of all of that, so I'm just petitioning to you that you would deny this request, or at least take it back to the drawing board. The second concern that I have is what Mills River is looking like. What do you picture Mills River looking like ten years from now? What's your vision of what it's going to look like ten years from now, twenty years from now? You want more industry packed in here with high-density housing and many homes? What do you want it to look like, even just ten years from now? So, just reconsider what's going on in our beautiful community, and we'll keep moving forward and upward. Take care of our people and our rabbits.
Thank you. Next, we have Chris Scruggs. You can take your mask down again, and introduce yourself for the minutes.
Chris Scruggs, I live at two-fourteen Banner Farm Road, and I own the property at two-ten Banner Farm Road. They both adjoined this property on the north side. And I'm here to show you some issues that we already have coming with water coming off the property. I have some pictures, if I can pass them out. And water comes off this property, off the tributary, that comes and goes into Boylston Creek. And when I moved into two-fourteen roughly about five-and-a-half years ago, we didn't have any flooding at this location. About, say about two-and-a-half years ago, we started having problems with flooding on this particular waterway and backing up, because as more and more development comes around that area, it's pushing more and more water to Boylston Creek. And we already know the problems that we have over on Ladson Road and over getting closer to the river. And that's starting to show signs on this property from everything being pushed to the natural drainage. And so, the more and more houses that are built, that's happening. And I'm not against development, but we need to use smart development. We need to account for this water runoff from the roads and the houses that doesn't have any vegetation to slow it down. It's getting to the waterways faster, so heavy rains are causing more and more flooding. Where this flooding happens, I showed you on the drawing, my drain field for that house is just feet away from where the water floods up to. And the pictures that I showed you, that's not even the worst that I've seen it. That's just one of the most recent ones that I did from about a year or so ago, that I took the picture, because I don't take pictures every time it happens. So, over the past few years, we're starting to see that backup flooding more and more often. So, my thing here today is that I would like to see something done with the water on the property. When you put this many homes on there, where's the water going? What are they doing with it? Where is it going? Are they going to put in retainage ponds or dry beds or something to slow the water down so that it has a place to go naturally and drain off without it all coming onto this property and flooding it and running over the access getting into the property? So, that's the concern, that the landowner couldn't be here, he's in Wilmington, and he asked me to speak about that and share this with you, because I live on the property full-time and take care of some things around that area. So, that's a big concern, and to echo Mr. Hill, the traffic and the safety, right there between my house and Boylston Creek, in the five years I've been there, I've seen at least five accidents that were rollovers or people crashing into the creek because they were going around the curb too fast. We add another entrance with that many cars coming out of there just around that curb with people flying around it. I'm afraid that's not going to be a good thing, so we need to address how is that going to be handled, because you're adding all these extra cars right there at a dangerous intersection. So, those are things that I'd like to address the council with. And I'd like to know more about the development. They plan on bringing in water and sewer. How does all that look? What do the price points on the homes look like? Stuff like that, because all that matters. Pricing on homes these days brings in, depending on if it's affordable, not affordable, brings in different classes of people, which brings in different issues along with that. So, that is a concern as a neighbor that we want to know about, what's going on. The other thing I would ask the board to consider is that you're giving a special use permit to increase the density on a property. The adjoining property is a hundred-and-fifty-plus acres. Consider that if you approve this, it could be likely the adjoining properties come and want the same thing. So, keep that in mind is all I ask. All I ask. Right? Thank you.
Thank you. To the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Roger, second. All those in favor? Okay, to our regular agenda.
For the benefit of the people who are listening, if you could speak instead of wave, it would be useful.
I second the motion.
Okay, first on the regular agenda, we have public hearing for special use permit, SUP twenty-one dash oh-one, Moore and Sons. We would like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion we open the public hearing regarding special use permit, SUP twenty-one dash zero-one.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Let me just read the number again. So, we're now in the public hearing, which we advertised for special use permit twenty-one dash oh-one.
Is it? So, is it, it's my understanding that the planning board has not made a recommendation on this project. Is that? Is that correct? So, so, me reading through the ordinances is that this council cannot make a positive or negative recommendation on this until those forty-five days are up. And then, is that if the planning board does not make a recommendation at the end of those forty-five days, then it automatically becomes a positive recommendation to the town council. Is that correct? Is that, is that, this is what I'd like to do, according to our ordinances, if the council so desires, is that I'd like to recess this public hearing. And so, is that, when is the forty-five days up?
Forty-five days is up April thirtieth. Your next meeting is May thirteenth, but the planning board does meet on April twentieth, and you meet on the twenty-second.
But is it, so if the planning board meets on April twentieth, and they make a decision, then that will suffice the forty-five-day rule?
The forty-five-day rule comes into play if they do not make a recommendation. If they do not make a recommendation, then forty-five days from the first day they heard it, it becomes an automatic favorable recommendation.
Okay.
But there's nothing keeping you from, if they make a recommendation, from hearing it. It's council's pleasure.
So, so, just to be on the safe side, when is our first council meeting? In what? May what? So, May thirteenth is our first council meeting in May. So, if the planning board does not take up or does not make a decision, so I just want to be careful and go by the ordinances. So, having said all that, I'd like to make a motion that we recess this meeting until May...
I'm sorry, correction, public hearing?
You what? I'm sorry?
You're recessing the public hearing in the meeting? Okay.
Shay, May twelfth? Is that, I'd like to recess this until then, six-thirty P.M. Is that, the other thing is that around May first, give or take, I'd like the staff to send out additional letters to the adjoining property owners.
Do we go through the notification process again?
We're not required to by law, but I think it makes sense if you're pushing it out that far.
So, you'd go through the same notification process the first time?
Yeah, the letters to the neighbors, posting of the property. We continue that.
Though on May first, if you're following the same notification process, May first is a little late for May thirteenth meeting.
So, it's in the usual time?
Yes, is that, I'm going to say give or take. Is that, I'm going to leave it up to you guys to figure out the logistics.
Yeah, so we'll treat it just as if it's another case, and we'll get it out no less than ten days, no more than twenty-five. Follow that.
That's my motion.
So, Roger has a motion to recess this public hearing to the May thirteenth meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye. Well, item B on the agenda, public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh-three.
May I, just for the people who might be listening that's sending comments on this, we'll hold these till the hearing?
Yeah. Do we need to close the first public hearing? Okay. We didn't. Don't want to get into it? Yeah, that's fine.
My name's Rick Moore with Moore and Sons. So, I'm just clarifying. Was that good?
We're not really having a public hearing, so...
If the public hearing is closed and...
You're still in your public hearing.
Okay.
She wants to close it first?
Yes, I'm actually at the point where I believe our attorney is listening, and I'd like to find out if this is a good idea. If Sharon would chime in?
I couldn't hear what Mr. Moore was saying as he was walking up to the microphone, but I heard a motion to recess the hearing, but I didn't hear that voted on.
It was voted, it was unanimous.
Then the hearing is recessed, and so the hearing for tonight is over.
Okay.
Thank you, Sharon.
Okay, so we can't, okay.
Yes, Sharon, is that the hearing has been recessed?
Okay, so we just open up the next one?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'll do this one. I'm going to make a motion to open into public hearing for the next item. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Okay, we are now in public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh-three, the text amendments for chapters one-fifty, one-fifty-one, one-fifty-two, and one-fifty-five. Daniel, are you the only one presenting?
Yes.
So, are you to be sworn in?
No, this is public hearing for the reason, for the...
Just the text, okay.
Text, yeah.
Not the special use, sorry.
Yeah, not a special use permit. I think, right? Yeah. Okay. So, we've talked about this a lot over the last couple of months, the one-sixty-D changes required by the new state law. We brought this first batch to you in February, and we spread them out to give you a little bit less reading at one time. So, tonight, your public hearing is a consideration of approving the changes to chapter one-fifty Building Regulations, chapter one-fifty-one Manufactured Home Parks, chapter one-fifty-two nuisances, and chapter one-fifty-five vested rights. When we presented these in February, the only change that we had was in chapter one-fifty, there was a line that said Mills River Fire Department and the town. But there was a request to separate those two. So, you had Mills River, I think it's actually Fire and Rescue, and the Town of Mills River, so the two distinct recognized organizations in that section of code. I can pull that up if you'd like to see it, but that was the only change that we made after those meetings. Our recommendation is to approve these as they've been presented.
Any discussion? We've all read, scanned, okay. Is there a motion to approve the text amendments?
Do you need them specifically, or no?
No, it's one ordinance approving all of these.
Okay.
If you make the motion to approve the ordinance, it approves everything.
All right, so I make a motion to approve the ordinance. Twenty... What she said.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of approving ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh-three? Aye. Not opposed. It's not our last public hearing, okay, and I'm going to make a motion to close public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor of closing public hearing? Back to regular meeting. Nicole, item C on the regular agenda is capital outlay for the park. Coming to us from down the hall.
Nicole, do you want to handle this? You want me to give the background I have as far as the...
Does she want to come in here? There's less people now.
Either raise fine, you can go ahead, Daniel.
Okay.
I'll be in.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So, in February, following the visioning session in January, we came back to you with some capital expenditure requests. One of those was a pickup truck for the Parks Department, and we had requested thirty-five thousand dollars in funding to purchase an F-two-fifty through the state contract program. We received some guidance and some direction to reach out to some local vendors, and that's what we did. We spoke with folks in Hendersonville, and I have to let Nicole tell you who exactly she spoke with. But essentially, there is a vehicle, as far as we know, on a lot in Hendersonville that meets the same specifications that we were looking for in a pickup. It's for sale, I believe it's still for sale at this point. But any other fleet orders from Dodge or Chevy or the state contract are basically on delay. They've had some supply issues, and they seem to be prioritizing their retail business side as opposed to the fleet side. So, there aren't many options to purchase anything at the moment, with the exception of that one on the lot in Hendersonville. Nicole, do you know if that truck is still available? Been a couple days since we talked about it.
Yeah, it's been about a week since I talked to them, and it was available as of last week. And they do honor the government pricing as the Ford dealership over there in Hendersonville.
Yes, so essentially, you have a couple options, or a few options. You could just wait and do nothing with this at this point. You can authorize funding not to exceed a certain amount, and we can continue to shop around and see if we can get something locally. Or if the state contract somehow opens up and we can order it from there, we could do that. Or we could reprogram this money into the budget, the upcoming budget for the upcoming year, and try again in a couple of months.
I brought this up whenever, is that I'd like to see comparisons. But I haven't seen any comparisons.
Yes, that's a good point. So, we did get a quote from Dodge. Yes, that's a good point. So we, we did get a quote from Dodge. I believe it was around thirty-three thousand dollars. It was not the same style of truck. It didn't have the extending cab. I think, Nicole, please correct me if I'm wrong. They didn't have the extending cab, which we would, we would like to have so we can have dry items in the vehicle. And then the only other option that they had was a complete four-door cab, I think with an eight-foot bed, which is more than what we would like to have. To be able to get around the park. And again, I think that was around thirty-three thousand dollars, but that's not available at this point. I believe because of the, the fleet sales.
So, back to my point. I don't have a sheet of paper in front of me. In the eyes specifically to see comparisons. Has that sheet been generated for us?
Well, that's the problem, Roger, is they cannot, because they don't have any trucks to sell and they are not taking orders yet and have pricing. For the next year's models. So that's what we're saying, there's not, locally, there's not trucks available other than what is currently on the lot. And the only truck, the only company that currently has trucks on the lot is the Ford dealership. And Daniel does have that information and number and it's, it's again, the government pricing, so it's very comparable to what you get through state contract. This one is already built, so there's, you know, here and there, it might have had different mirrors or different little things. But we could, we cannot get pricing right now because there are not, they are not taking orders and there's not trucks available.
So, I hate to beat this horse. But is that. Before I buy anything, I'm gonna compare prices.
Sure.
And so I want a sheet, I want to see a sheet of paper. And, you know, is that, what you guys looking at may be the best deal, that's fine. But I think it behooves us, the five of us. To see if we can get the best deal that we can. And in order to see that, I've got to look at Dodge prices. Chevrolet prices, Ford and whoever. Well, is that, have we, have we generated that piece of paper yet?
We've not been able to. Like Nicole mentioned, they're not, they're not taking orders right now, so they've not been able to prepare us anything. So, back to the original point with, with this item is, is if you don't feel comfortable taking action now, there's, there's no. There's no need to. We're, we're simply telling you what we've been able to find out since we came in February. To, to follow up to your request, Roger, to get other quotes, we've not been able to, because again, they're not taking orders.
I guarantee you that in the morning, I can call the three dealers. And I can get comfortable prices. I'll bet you a hundred bucks. Well, that's what I'm looking for.
Sure, yeah, I understand.
Well, is that, then why are we even discussing this? Is that if a council member requested. A specific item.
Roger, I, I just want to clarify that I did do that. I did call all those dealerships. And I even have a letter, I believe Daniel has it with him, from the dealership stating that they cannot give me pricing right now.
I will have you pricing by the end of tomorrow. Is that if you give me the specifications. I will have you pricing on all three by the end of tomorrow. I'll take tomorrow off. And I will do the job. I think that is something that staff ought to be doing. Is that if I can do it, then somebody else can do it.
Is it that we're asking for like a specifically built specifications? Not like what they have on their lot? Is that, like, we're not walking up to a dealership and looking to buy something off the lot, right?
Well, that is one option that, that Nicole was able to come up with because they had a vehicle on the lot for sale. We're not, we're not looking for anything magical, just the four-wheel drive with the extended, extended cab. And an eight-foot bed, I mean, it's, it's nothing to write home about, vinyl seats, real, pretty bare bones. So that there is a truck available, Ford F two fifty, but like she said, in reaching out to the other dealerships, they didn't have anything on the lots. And so the next step was to order something, which is pretty normal. But they're not, as of March first. They're not taking any more orders. Early cutoff was March first of twenty twenty-one.
So are we in that big of a hurry? So going back, so you said it was a Ford three fifty?
It was a two fifty.
Is it dual wheels on the back or a single axle?
A single axle.
Okay, so have you checked with other dealers to see what they have? I mean, Asheville?
Nicole, how far was your reach? Did you talk to that? Let me, let me just put it this way.
To the local dealerships in Henderson County. Because again, part of the direction was to check with the local dealerships, but everybody is in the same boat as far as special order. With, if you want a fleet truck, there's, there is a chance maybe somebody has one. But if we get something that is not considered or built as a fleet truck, we don't get the government discount pricing.
So now to answer your question, Roger, there's, there's no immediate need for this right now. We could always, always use it, but. You know, it's not gonna stop operations if we don't get it. We can certainly look into it and come back when they're, when they're ready to provide us quotes. Which I guess will probably be later this year.
They estimated seven to nine months.
Okay.
Is that, all I'm trying to do, whether it's Ford, Chevrolet, Dodge, whoever. I'm just trying to get the best deal. That we can. And so is that if we save a nickel here, that's a nickel we can spend somewhere else. So, is that, so I guess that's why I'm kind of, is that I'm a Chevrolet guy. But I understand Chevrolet may not be available. Ford may not be available. Dodge may not even be available. But is that, let's don't rush in, is that anytime that you buy a vehicle. You go shop and you come back a week, two weeks, a month. I mean, I do it, everybody else does it. So let's just not rush in, just because if there's one particular vehicle on the lot. That we got to have. Now, going to the state contract, the state contract sometimes is good. As Brian Caskey pointed out about the desk at our meeting. Is that, just because you buy on state contract, does it mean that you're getting the best deal? So, what I was looking for is that, let's just take a F three fifty. Is that, if that's what you guys are interested, that's fine. Is that, look at it at a local dealer, and I'm all about shopping local. Is that, look at it, get a price, let's say it's thirty thousand dollars. You may get on the state contract for forty thousand. But in that case, it's nuts to go with the state contract. But it also could be in reverse. And so, as of right now, I haven't seen no figures.
Right.
And now, is that, I was at the Chevrolet dealership. Last week. And I was asking the salesman. About pickup trucks. And so he said, Roger, he said, I've got two Chevrolet pickup on the lot. He said, I've already got people waiting in line for them. So I understand what you guys are saying, I do. But I'm just trying to compare cost and prices and so forth. Is that, that's all I'm after.
And that, that makes a lot of sense.
Is that, basically, is that, let's do our homework before we buy something. Thank you, guys.
As, as Roger mentioned, I was once a state employee and I've had differing experiences with. Items on state contract. You know, I, I think I told the story last time about my, my boss telling me to go grab a catalog and pick out a desk from it. And the cheapest one I could find was five thousand dollars. And I had an empty office and I went to him and I said, look, I don't want a five thousand dollar desk, I just want a desk. And he said, well, if that's the cheapest one, that's the one you're getting. So give me the catalog and I'll order it for you. But I've also had the reverse experience where things are a lot cheaper and in pricing out this particular pickup truck. The cheapest one that I could price out was thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. And if, if memory serves, Daniel, this, this truck that you guys were looking at was thirty-five?
The, the one in Hendersonville is, yeah, it's thirty-five.
Thirty-five. So I, I think in this case, you know, if they're, if they're willing to meet state contract pricing. I think we're getting a good deal and I'd be comfortable moving forward. I'd also be comfortable delaying if that's the wish of council. I just don't want this to drag into the next budget year. Because this is an item that's budgeted for this fiscal year, so if we have a, you know. I could go either way on this. But I don't see a problem if we want to move ahead with this now. If we decide we want to drag our feet and, and collect some other bids, I'm okay with that. But I just don't want to see us go past June and then, then we're into the next budget year.
One, one, one other thing, Daniel. Is that, since we're getting the electric charging stations. Have you guys looked at electric vehicle? Now, I know it's gonna be seventy-five thousand dollars. And I don't even know if they make them yet. But is that, I'd rather spend, Roger. The seventy thousand to get electric vehicle that will service twenty years down the road. As to buying a gas vehicle. And it, and then you come back to us in four or five years and say, this vehicle is completely wore out. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, certainly it makes sense. Uh, no, we haven't looked at electric vehicles yet, but I think that's a good idea and we can, we can do that as part of this work. While we're trying to find some other numbers to compare, there's no, there's no harm in getting a number on it.
I can answer part of that question, I think. Ford and Chevy both plan to make electric pickup trucks. They're currently in the design phase now. They will be released next year and nobody knows what the price point is. But they will have more horsepower and more torque than a gasoline-powered model, so. That's something that's obviously interested me as well.
Consensus that we keep shopping?
So if I'm hearing Daniel right and he's saying, you know, a month or two is not really gonna cause that big of an issue here, tell me, right?
Can I just clarify though, that even if you guys hold off a month or two, the, the vehicles aren't available. And they're talking seven to nine months before, unless it's already currently built. So I think it's either we buy this one on the lot or we're gonna be looking at next fiscal year, just, just so you all are clear on that. It's not putting it off a month or two. It's either now or we're looking at it again in the fall when the twenty. I don't even think it's the twenty twenty-two vehicles, it's gonna be the twenty twenty-three vehicles come out.
We don't have to buy a brand new one, do we?
No, there's not, no.
Well, so is that, let's, let's shop around, is that. Is that, what they say is that a new vehicle depreciates twenty percent or something. Now, I don't want to buy somebody else's problems and that's the risk that you take.
Sure, yeah.
I'm just trying to, you know, I'm not trying to pinch pennies. But I want to save dollars.
Sure. And I think that's, that's our goal too. So we'll, what I'm hearing is hold off on this right now until we can get some other hard numbers. Which, which we'll get just as soon as they're available.
All right, that repopped this topic. All right, uh, regular agenda, item D, discussion about the noise ordinance.
So we talked about this at your last meeting a couple of weeks ago and in your packet, you'll find. A paper copy of the updated version of the code. And what we did with this one was remove the requirement. A permitting would be required for, for, for someone and then the permit to exceed limits has also been removed. And that was modified, that was section one fifty-two point two eight. And that was titled, retitled to authorization to exceed limits, which essentially. Without a permit, gives people the opportunity to exceed limits on certain days of the year.
So I think when I look through it, one of the concerns I had about taking the, the permit process out for amplified sound. Is that we then don't have any way of, of the town recognizably knowing. Where these types of events are occurring. I would prefer that we put that section back in there so that we're, you know, the, the one about exceeding the noise. Authorization to exceed limits, I agree with that one being gone. I mean, I don't, in my opinion, there's not a case where you should ever exceed limits. I mean, I don't, that's kind of like getting permission from the sheriff's department to drive ninety into fifty-five, in my opinion, but. Well, I think, I mean, generally, I don't think people, if we're getting the sheriff's department to enforce the noise ordinance. The sheriff's department's not gonna go on Fourth of July and enforce the ord, people shooting off files, there's not gonna, they got bigger things to worry about. And I think some of these problems are just, they're common sense issues that are gonna take care of themselves, but I would like to see. The permit process put back then there so that if we have a commercial venue who is consistently violating. That, then we have an ability to, to revoke their permit, you know, I mean, for some commercial entities paying a five hundred dollar fine. That's nothing. I mean. They probably profit more than that in alcohol sales.
So the, the way this, the way it's written now, Daniel, in here, the enforcement would be totally with the sheriff's department. Is that correct?
Give me one second to read that section again. I believe that is correct. So under one fifty-two point two nine, noise complaints, it states that. Their complaints may be filed with the sheriff's department or the town of Mills River. And then it says the investigating, this is online, two, two ninety-one. The investigating deputy or code enforcement officer has the authority to cause or rip the complaint to be made and issue a citation. So it's not solely on the sheriff's department. It would include town stack as well.
I agree with Brian on this. I think any commercial entity in town. That is playing outdoor amplified music needs to have a permit. We can head off a lot of these things, a lot of misunderstandings with, with businesses that play outdoor music. In the permitting process. Straight up front, tell them what is expected of them and what, what the neighbors expect not to be disturbed. After certain hours. I think, I think we need some sort of permitting in this ordinance. It just, to me, it's a no-brainer. And I only had one other question on this, just on line one eighty-four. So, we, I guess the eleven o'clock hour was taken from the county ordinance.
That's right.
I really think that we need to do the Monday through Thursday, nine o'clock and 10 o'clock on Friday and Saturdays.
What was it Monday through Thursday? I'm sorry.
Well, you know, ending at nine o'clock.
Oh, okay.
And then, you know, an extra hour on Fridays and Saturdays.
Yeah, thank you.
My mistakes. And I'll agree with, uh, Councilman Austin and Councilman Kimball. I, I think the permitting process really sort of hammers home what we're trying to do to the businesses who might otherwise be in violation of this. Maybe they might not even know they're in violation of this, but requiring them to come in and get a permit, we make everything understood from the word go. Yes, absolutely. So, um, I, I believe that that section should come back in, uh, in requiring that permit. Otherwise, I agree with the, with the hours that we're describing here and, and having read through the, the rest of this ordinance, I'm comfortable with it.
Just, if I may, real quickly, which, which section in particular are you referring to that should come back? I'd rather just undo rather than type something new.
Yeah.
Oh, just modifying that. Okay, so line 247 where, where it says authorization to, and then permits was stricken. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. But, so we want to, we want to keep the word permits, but not to exceed limits.
Correct.
Permits to have amplified sound, I guess, might be the better way. Is that fair? Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, yeah.
One other question. So when the, when you issue a permit, will, will you take a name of a person that has to be responsible or a contact person that must be present when the, when the music or whatever is going on?
Yeah, I think we can have, similar to like the zoning permit application that says property owner, and then there's contact information for an applicant. So we would have something like that where you have the property owner information and then maybe responsible party or something like that, that places the responsibility on paper. And someone should always be there and that someone is one of these three or four people. Is that, is that what you're after?
Yes.
I'd like to see the property owner come in and get the permit. Because at the end of the day, is that, you can, you know, the sheriff's department could go out. And I think what I used Bon Jovi last time, Bon Jovi may be playing. So is that if they're exceeding it, the limits, who's going to get the ticket? Is it the band, the general manager, or the property owner? In, in most cases, our ordinances falls back on the property owner.
Right.
So is it, I just want to make it clear who has to come in and get the permit, who is responsible when the sheriff's department goes out and tells them to turn the music down? Is that, and if they don't, then who's going to get the ticket?
What if you're talking like a Sierra Nevada though? But I mean, are those owners in town that are going to come get permits?
Yes.
Talk, because I'm thinking bigger, bigger corporations.
Right.
To answer your question, yes, the fines, the penalties would, did we go to the, the property owner regardless of who's responsible for the event that night? And it would make sense to continue that practice with this as well.
Is that, I'd like the property owner to come in and get the permit. Then that way he knows he's responsible because a general manager may come in and get the permit and the property owner never know nothing about it.
True.
Kind of what may be happening that brought all this about.
And this, I think we're covered on this in the actual ordinance as far as the town being able to enforce it. But one thing I would like to see, um, maybe as a part of the next, next year's budget presentation is that there's possibly a potential for a part-time person here at the town to look at enforcing that on the commercial side.
Yeah, I think, I think in order to, to achieve what this ordinance is, is attempting to achieve and protecting them, protecting the neighborhoods, um, we can't rely solely on the sheriff's department because we all know they're going to do what they need to do to keep the community safe. And this might, these complaints probably aren't going to be a priority. So there's a couple of options for that. Um, we're in the middle of hiring is on the administrator, of course, and hopefully we'll have that person on board soon. But I think in addition to that, to really do this, we would need to have someone at, at least on a part-time basis. Or maybe even what's called permanent part-time, which is where they work less than a thousand hours a year. Um, and they would work certain days of the week, maybe Thursday through Saturday, from, I don't know, three to 11 or four to 10 or something like that, where they have some time in the office to pick up, keep up on permitting and, and paperwork for violations as they come in. Uh, but then also can be available, um, to essentially patrol or work on a complaint driven basis. However, council wants to, wants to pursue the complaint section like that. And then this person could also be available for extra security, um, in the park, you know, at the end of the night, they could just take a, take a lap around, make sure everyone's gone. And then I think it could also be someone to help out with other general responsibilities, like making sure our street lights are, um, that are all working, you know, and.
All the after dark duties.
Right, exactly. Uh, it wouldn't, it, I don't think you need to have a full-time position for it, but I think, um, it needs to be likely a permanent part-time because you want, you're going to want a consistent employee who has a consistent schedule, even though it's not a full-time schedule, it's a consistent schedule.
And Daniel, before, I'd like to, before you maybe hire somebody from outside, I'd like for you to offer s- some of these hours to our part-time people that are on staff now. That way you know what kind of work ethic they have and what kind of people that, that we might be dealing with. So I think it'd be a good idea, but you know, we have part-time park rangers. So let's, you know, a little bit of training for them and to offer them some extra hours might be a good thing.
This doesn't necessarily have to be a zoning, someone with a zoning background, if you're just enforcing.
Correct. I mean, a regulatory background would be beneficial, whether they can take many forms, retired law enforcement, zoning administrator, you know, there's a lot of different backgrounds that can do this kind of work.
Well, I, I just wanted to, yeah, I just want to say, I think we're really close here. I agree with Councilman Kimball that, um, you know, we've cleaned this up a little bit with the, uh, permits portion. But, uh, I just wanted to mention that I have a, a friend here in town who is a record producer and he also has a, a full-on music studio in his, in his house. And he called me because he heard that this was going to be discussed tonight and he was concerned about it. Uh, and so I said, would, would it make you feel better if you looked at it? And he said, sure. So I said, I'll print out a copy and I'll bring it over. So I went over to his house the other day and, and we sat on his front porch and he read through it. And he said, you know, I, I lived in Atlanta and actually protested a, a, a noise ordinance that they had there because it was making it too hard for people to hold concerts and things out, outdoors. And he said, Asheville a couple of years ago did the same thing. They put out an unwise ordinance. It was just too severe and it was impacting musicians. And he said, I can't find any fault with this. He said, what you guys are doing here is really reasonable and it, it relies on the judgment of the officer or the person coming out, and that's really all you can ask for. Is, is it too loud or is it not? It's kind of like pornography. You know, when you see it, right? So, um, coming from somebody who's in that business, I don't think we're going to find that this is overly burdensome on the people that we're, we're trying to gently push back against and just to ensure that there's civility within the town limits. So I'm happy with this.
One thing, I know in general our ordinance is exempt agriculture. It's not specifically in noise. Do we need to put it specifically in noise so that doesn't come a hot topic later?
Yes, we can certainly do that.
Just want to make sure that, I mean, in general it's covered, but I don't want someone to hone in on the specifics because it has exceptions and that's not one of them. So.
Yeah, no problem.
What's on this? Okay, moving on. Now our discussion on item E, food trucks.
I'm sorry, uh, not to belabor the point, but just, just so we're clear on the changes for the noise, the noise ordinance. We've got Sunday through Thursday, cutoff is 9:00 PM, right? That's what we've, that's, okay. Friday through Saturday, it's 10:00 PM. We're going to add an exempt, an exception for agriculture. So it's clearly listed in the noise ordinance as well. We're going to have permits for amplified sound, correct, as a standalone permit process for that.
So everyone's on the same page.
Okay. That has to be, that has to be signed by the property owner as well as who, who, if, if someone else is going to be responsible for it, they would need to be on that as well. I think, I think that's all we discussed, right? Yeah, right. Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, so food trucks. Once again, no one brought any food and I'm hungry.
What'd she say?
We talk about food trucks and now I'm hungry.
Yeah, me too.
And that's not going to cut it. But thank you.
Okay, so this item came before you at your meeting and, um, on March 11th. And you'll see some changes to it with red lining of, of sections and then some blue text, which of course is new stuff. So the, the biggest, um, item that we, that we addressed in this that was discussed, uh, last time was permitting for the actual vendors. Um, and the consensus was, don't worry about permitting the vendors individually. We want to get to the location where the vendor is going to be vending permitted, AKA the property. The property owner would be responsible for that. We did keep what we're calling a registration. There's no fee associated with this, but the, the intention with this is if, if a food truck is going to come to Mills River, they would need to fill out a piece of paper or they would hopefully do it online soon. That says, my name is whatever, Daniel's food truck. Um, here's my contact information. And that's basically it. Um, and then they would be, they would be able to operate in town. And, and the point of that was, is to give us an opportunity to reach out to someone if we need to, who's not the property owner, someone who's operating an actual vending unit. Again, no fee, just a registration. And then the property owner would be responsible for permitting their property for the, to host the vehicle. And they can do this in a, in a couple of different ways. In this, we clarified a little bit on, on line 78 is where we started with the temporary vendor locations. We provided more explicit examples of what this means. So temporary vendor shall be permitted based on one of the following conditions. So this clearly sets out, if you're operating a business, uh, you can have a, a food vendor or temporary vendor there, as long as you want, subject to the hours in the ordinance with, with, with no permitting on behalf of the vendor, they would just need to be registered. So that would be a clearly an accessory use. So your main use would be building widgets and you have a food truck, it can be any food truck you'd like show up on whatever schedule works for, for the vendor. Um, and then it, they also may be permitted, uh, as a principal use under a zoning compliance permit. And that would be, um, to the, to the food truck, excuse me, food park idea where it is the use of the property. So the example we put in the code is a vacant piece of land, um, can be improved and host up to eight food trucks since currently it was in the definition. And then the, the other option would be as a special event. Uh, and this would be something like, if you wanted to have a competition over a weekend, they wanted to have that, a bunch of vendors from all over the place, you wouldn't need to, to, um, permit anything specific as, like, you wouldn't have to do the extra stuff that would be required as a food park such as additional restrooms or anything like that. It would just be to operate for a period of, not to exceed 72 hours. And then you could do that up to four times a year. Um, and that's purely would be temporary. Um, and the permit for that would have to come in at least five days prior to the event. And then it would be issued based on, uh, basic requirements, contact information data of the event, expected number of food trucks, those sorts of things. And then we did add a section at the back of the, the text, beginning on line 130 about fees. And, and simply reference the fee schedule as opposed to putting a fee in the ordinance. There's no right or wrong, uh, way to do that. It's, we just look at it from an administrative point of view. If you want to change a fee, it's, it's more straightforward to just change the fee schedule than it is to hold a public hearing to change the ordinance. So again, a food truck vendor, vendor themselves would not have a fee. It would just be a fee for the property owner to pay. Um, and we've proposed uh, $25 for the vendor locations. Uh, special event would be $25. And a food park, we put in at $200 because that's akin to any other type of commercial project that we have. And new construction is currently in the, in a budget ordinance at $200 for, for a new permit. So we propose that with the same for the food park.
I brought this up last time is that, why do we need to know? So Huett is sitting here, so Joey's not here, so I'm going to use Huett as an example. So, so Huett is the property owner. And like we talked about in the noise ordinance, is that all of our ordinances is geared towards the property owner. At the end of the day, I'm responsible for, for my property.
Right.
So Huett, do you mind if I use you?
Yeah, okay.
So, so is that, I really don't like the property owner Huett having to come in and get a permit, but I will concede that fact. So Huett comes in, let's say January the first. He pays a $25 fine, or not a fine, but a $20, $25 fee. And he said, I'm going to have food trucks on my property. Thank you, Huett, for coming in. See you. Is that, because each one of these locations have different circumstances where, is that, is that we're trying to put them all into one category? And I don't think that that's fair. Is that Bold Rock is mostly stationary. With a little work, they could move it out. With Mills River Brewery, with a little work, they could move it out. Huett's case is that they could back up and be gone in 10 minutes? Be gone in 10 minutes.
Sure.
So, and then you've got, is that you've got a whole wide range of these food trucks. So let's put it back on the property truck. I don't see no need in Huett having the lobster guy on Monday, the pizza guy on Tuesday, is that I don't see no need for the town to have to know that. Now, as long as Huett comes in and gets his permit, I'm perfectly fine that, okay, town of Mills River, I own this property and there's a possibility I'm going to have a food truck. But making, in Huett's case, he may have three or four during the week. Is it fair? Is it fair?
Yeah, probably seven different ones.
So is that we're regulating something that I don't think that needs to be regulated? Is that if we have a problem, then let's go after the people that's creating the problem. And so is that Roger's playing loud music. So let's beat the whole subdivision down because Roger's playing music too loud. And that's basically what we're doing. And I don't think that, that that's right. Is that let them come in and get a permit, Bold Rock, Mills River Brewery, Whit and whoever else. And if Whit decides he wants to have three food trucks on his property, well, okay, Whit, we're going to talk now. Well, I know, but, but I was just, it's that, I was just picking on you guys. So these food trucks, yes, they make a lot of money, but some of them are small businesses trying to get going. Like we heard from the pizza guy. He, he said, if I could build me a building, I'd love to. And you guys are business owners, managers, so forth. Y'all didn't start out in a, in a brand new building. So I want to keep the small business person in mind. Now, at some point in time, okay, we need to address that. But is that as we go through this food truck ordinance, let's keep in mind is that these people are just trying to make a living, get their name out there, sell a product. And hopefully, if we don't beat them over the head, they may build a building in Mills River. So.
I see your point. However, I will say, you know, I look at it more as that process is a business cultivator. So if you're a small business and you own a food truck and I wanted, let's just say I'm based out of somewhere else and I want to come to Mills River. I want to put a food truck. You know, it would be nice if I knew who the permit holders were so that I know where I could go. It would also be nice if, when I say, hey, I want to put my food truck in Mills River, then people who are property owners can say, hey, let's look and see what people we can choose from. So now I'm getting, I'm getting a list of people that I can choose from. So maybe there's a food truck out there that a commercial entity doesn't know about. And they look at this list and they're like, oh, we never heard of this guy, let's give him a chance. So that's creating an opportunity for a small business. So I look at it and say, we're cultivating a partnership between property owners and small business. So, and I, I think that's a win-win in that scenario. They're not paying a fee, we're not getting into their business, we're not asking any questions. It's just, what's your food truck name, who's operating it? And I think that's a, it's a simple process, you know? And I, I don't think it's asking too much and I think it protects the property owner. It protects the small business of the food truck. Let's say I continually go to a commercial property here and let's say he doesn't renew his permit. It would be nice if the town could send out an email to all the food truck operators and say, hey, just a heads up, this property that everybody was going to no longer has a permit. Because what if I show up there on Monday and I'm out there selling and here comes the town staff and their little pickup truck and, and they getting on me for selling stuff and I'm like, well, I didn't even know. I mean, it's a protection, it protects a lot of people involved. And I think it's, it's actually looking after small business.
I just don't want to promote a food truck over Mills River Restaurant. And so is that we're asking the food truck people to get a permit, but and I hate to pick on Nick, but the, the Mills River Restaurant people is that they're not on our webpage. So we're dealing with food trucks today. So is that, and since Shay's sitting here, is that her husband sells hay. I know it's agriculture, but he sells hay out of his barn. Well, are we going to put him on our website? Okay, what about Mike Corr? What about Bradley? So is that, is that if we start promoting a specific category, I don't, I don't think that we should promote food trucks. The, the customers will, will promote themselves. Will promote the food trucks. Is that if the town starts promoting or, you know, as a guy told me yesterday, he said, Roger, he said, once that gate's open and one cow goes through, the whole herd is going through that gate. So I want to make sure that we think about this, that we're not pitting the food trucks over the restaurants that we have or vice versa. So then the rental company up on two eighty, they say, well, you're promoting food trucks. You know, how can I get on the list? And then you've got the farms. Then, okay, is that why not the farmer's market? So is that it's a never-ending game? So the best thing to do is keep the stupid cow in the pasture before we open up the gate. So I'm against registering individual food trucks. I'm all about, well, I'm against it, but, but I'll go along with it. Is that Whit as being a property owner, coming in and getting a permit and saying, I'm going to have a food truck on, on my property. Now, is that if Whit ends up with three on his property, Whit, we're coming out to see you. So I just want to be careful how we handle this. And the food trucks, personally, I think that they're a necessary item. I mean, I've been to the lobster guy. I've been to Bold Rock, is that, I've, is that I've tried to get to each one of them. Some I like, some I don't like. The ones I don't like, I won't be back. So I think that the customer would dictate who shows up and who don't. And so if the customer don't come to the lobster guy, Whit's going to say, you're done, move on. Okay.
And, and I agree with you, the town shouldn't advertise. So the town doesn't have to list them on the website. I think that doesn't have to happen. The town of Mills River currently, and I'll use as an example, we're already doing this for whenever a new commercial entity is built, they have to get an R F study done to see if they meet standards for public communications inside their building. When they get that information from the county, which represents the town of Mills River, on it is a list of vendors that they're allowed to use. So we're already doing it for something else. So this process would be no different.
But we don't know who they are.
You don't know who is.
Is that when Amazon come? Is that they went through everything before they even put their name on the thing? So you know, is it, I understand what you're saying. Is that they've got to jump through all these hoops. It's the same way with the food truck. First, I'm going to use the lobster guy again. Is that the lobster guy has got to say, Whit, can I come and park on your property on Tuesdays? Whit says, yes, I have a permit from the town that says you're okay. Now, before the lobster guy gets there, he's got to have his county, what do you call it, the, the grade?
Yeah, it's like the state and the county.
Is, do what? So you got to have a state and a county grade up there on his wall, right? So is that he's already regulated. So let's do, let's try not to regulate him no more than we absolutely have to.
I was just going to say, you know, I spent nine years on the plan board. So three of us were on the plan board whenever we talked about, and there was one food truck in town Mills River town. Whenever we came up with some recommendations for council to use for permitting food trucks, council chose not to, and that was their right, to not proceed with that. So I think that what we have here is the best that could be had as far as food trucks go. I really do. It's better than what we came up with years and years ago. It's fair to everyone, I think. I like it. I just, I'm ready, I'm ready to go on with it myself. It's just my opinion.
Yeah, I am too. I, I think it's very important that the town knows what food trucks are operating where. Because currently in the town code, there's actually no mention of food trucks. That's a problem because we know they're here. The other thing we know is that this is going to be a, a business incubator for people who want to get into business with a restaurant. And I would like for Mills River to be known as a place that's welcoming to food trucks. Hey, these are written right into our town ordinance. You can come here, arrange it with a property owner, come get your, get your permit and you can be up and, up and running with your business in a very short amount of time. So I, I agree, I think this is not overly burdensome. I think that it's, it's going to be a stimulant to the town. I think that we've found with the comprehensive plan that people are absolutely dying for new restaurant options. So, you know, by, by making it known what restaurants are here, what food trucks are here, I think we're going to stimulate business for those people. I think this is the best of both worlds. I don't think it's overly burdensome and, and I'm going to yes on it.
We already have a public hearing date for April, so were there any changes that we all are in agreement with before? Or send it to public hearing as it is?
I'd like to make a motion that we just sent it to the public hearing.
Well, we already set a public hearing date.
We already said it, yes, but this is.
As final version.
Yes.
That works, yeah.
So basically you're making a motion to reinforce that this is the version you want. How we can do that.
That was with no changes, correct?
Correct.
You need a second, Sue?
Sure.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor of this version for the public hearing? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, wrapping up food trucks. Agenda item F, the, they can see on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. This, hold on, does Nicole want to present? Daniel, who's presenting? Anyone presenting?
Well, let's, Sue.
Somebody.
Walt Puckett, longtime volunteer for the town, has resigned from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. He just says it's time. Walt was on our planning board, they took a small gap, was on the park board fifteen years, which, you know, will, we will do something for him in the future. But anyway, you have applications that I sent to you for this vacancy if you are interested.
Sue, I think he's also kind of weaving an in on our incorporation committee.
He, he was, but I was spotlighting his volunteer for the town.
So I just want to throw something out there. At visioning this past January, we discussed the different advisory boards that the town has and, and, and the structure of those boards and some have nine seats, some have seven, some have fewer. And we discussed the possibility of streamlining those boards and bringing them into a more coherent body that would, that would advise this board. And so what I would like to propose is that we hold off on any and all appointments and/or reappointments for the foreseeable future until we get to the point where we can look at restructuring these boards and perhaps bringing them into alignment with some of the information we're getting back from the comprehensive plan. So I'll make that motion that we just hold off for right now. And look at restructuring some of these boards and making appointments as, as needed at that, at that time.
I'll second Brian's motion.
All those in favor of holding off on, on filling this vacancy and looking at our board structure in the future, say aye. Aye.
I, I would just caution to not put this off for too long or you may, because we're not reappointing, you may end up with boards that it's very difficult to get a quorum at a meeting because you don't have enough members. So if you want to consider agendas and where to place this, it would be helpful.
April twenty seconds pretty full.
Brian, or Brian, is that looking into the future, is that when are you thinking about tackling this restructuring thing? Is that, is that, I know it's just a guess, but is that? And then that way people can kind of be thinking, we can kind of be thinking about when and maybe we need to take, take a whole council meeting to talk about it. If you guys got any thoughts?
Just for clarification, when do we adopt the, when's the comprehensive plan come back to us?
We're planning for May, May thirteenth, I believe is the date that we have set. We're taking it to the planning board in April.
I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't, I would rather wait till after we adopt that before we even start to look at it. That way if something changes in the meantime, we're, that's me, we can still be thinking about it, but that's.
Looking at late May at the earliest, maybe into June.
Yeah, probably in the June.
Because they're going to be in budgets too.
Yeah, we are, yeah. And we don't expect to have just one meeting on the comprehensive plan. I mean, we'll certainly accommodate that if that's what the board wants. But we expect they'll take a couple of meetings, so I think probably in the June is likely.
And traditionally, our schedule lightens up significantly into June. So I think that should be our, our task, looking, maybe we can target into summer to have all these boards sorted out, all appointments made and.
So we're not going to reappoint anything in the meantime?
Right.
I'm trying to open that document right now. Because when you get into June, the, for example, the park board will suddenly be, it's frozen. You have several June thirtieth. So they may, what I'm, what I'm concerned about is you may get to the point where you have boards that cannot function. So if we put this too far off.
So our second meeting in June would be the twenty fourth. So if we didn't get it the tenth, we got the twenty fourth, we'd still be ahead of the June thirtieth.
We added a, we had a position on the parks board.
We just added a position, yeah.
Last meeting or so.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's fully staffed under its original side at this point.
I'm going to go ahead and set a date. The second, the second meeting in June. Nobody on vacation.
I'm, I, I've finally gotten this to react and I am corrected that the park board, all those June thirty appointments are for twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so we've got a year for that.
So you have, you have a year on that. You're just, I don't think we have anybody that's. I'm going to say, let's put it on that last meeting in June and if it becomes a problem, we'll bring it back to you.
All right.
Depending on how big a. Depending on how big of a tangle this is, we might, we might want to consider tackling one board. Per meeting or two boards a meeting or what have you, but I think having all of this, as Brian mentioned, line up with the comprehensive plan makes a lot of sense in terms of. Good advice coming to this body.
All right, so that takes care of the agenda. Now we have staff updates. Sue, you are first.
And I don't have anything further except to say if there's anything that you want me to put together for you for that discussion between now and June. You know, like what other towns are doing with boards or what the current boards are charged with or something like that, please let me know.
Nicole, are you still with us? Do you have an update from the parks?
I am. Just real quick, I know we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, but for anyone who wasn't quite on yet, we do have the blood drive tomorrow. From eleven to four, there are still a few spots, mostly in the later afternoon available, so. If you have had your COVID vaccine, you can still get, you can still donate blood, you just need to bring your card with you so they know what. What vaccine you have, they just make note of that. Other than that, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, we hosted our first hard to recycle, which was a huge, huge success. We had almost five hundred folks, cars come through. A tractor trailer and a half load of styrofoam was saved from going to the landfill, and we had very, very positive response. We partnered with. Greenworks and Henderson County on that, and we're really hoping to do that again because of the response we did receive. Other than that, the parks just been very busy. Our part time staff has come back for the season. We do have, unfortunately, Joey Bryson is leaving us here in mid April. He's got a lot of family commitments happening coming up. And we've been interviewing this week to hopefully fill his position, and so hopefully we'll have a seamless transition from when he leaves and we'll get somebody new in to train and. And so that'll be really great. But other than that, soccer started. Past couple of weeks, so that's been really great. That's the first sporting stuff we've had, seeing kids out there smiling and playing, and they've been doing a great job following all the. The guidelines, they're wearing masks and, you know, limiting attendance and everything, and that's really just been very uplifting, seeing all the kids. Getting back together and getting active again, so that's been great. Is that other than that? You know, just getting ready for spring, we'll get our sun shades up soon and the dog park opened and mulch and all that kind of stuff, so just raring up for the warm weather.
We have a make up date for softball game?
That is, we have this. I think that's it's a discussion we need to have, the whether the hope was going to be this weekend, but obviously the weather is not super cooperative, so. Then then we have Easter and stuff coming, so I think we're gonna have to look at a little longer term. We may want to do a. You know, a little smaller grand opening and then reschedule our game for a later date, so that's something I know Daniel was gonna broach with all of you of what your thoughts were on that.
Okay, thanks Nicole.
Okay, and to Daniel.
By way of update, the bicycle and pedestrian planning grant that we got back in January, I guess it was. There's a couple of steps that have to happen before work begins, and we just crossed a major milestone today. The. State has approved the scope of work for the consultants to follow for this project. So that should be signed in the next couple of days by the state, which means that they'll be able to begin work. Pretty soon thereafter, doing the data collection, analysis, sort of behind the scenes stuff. Speaking of board and committees, we will have to have a steering committee for that, for that plan. It's 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 pretty well prescribed to us by the state. Who needs to be on the board as far as an elected official MPO representative and so forth, doesn't dictate who personally needs to be on there. So we'll be bringing that to you probably later this spring. I tried to push this out just a hair because I wanted to get past the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Discussion, the Comprehensive Plan Discussion. I don't want to burn people out on public engagement, so we're hoping to get the steering committee together. Late summer, get the public engagement part out or late summer, early fall. So that's still moving. It's moving well. And the other thing is that I want to give a quick presentation. I'm sure you've all heard of the American Rescue Plan Act that was passed a couple of weeks ago, was passed on March sixth, but it was signed by the president on March eleventh. So if if that's all right with the board, I just have a quick four or five slides to show. Just one second, get those pulled up.
Oh, cool. All right.
Then Daniel, while you're while you're doing that, is that have on this, on this greenway. Path. Is that have you reached out to Fletcher in Henderson County? Because this potentially could go into their jurisdictions.
We've not done that yet, but we will as part of this project. All right, bear with me, it's. Disappeared for some reason. I might just have to go off memory. Well, I don't know what happened to it. Yeah. Well, I thought it was saved on my desktop. Can some, can you type on that computer back there, please? It's called initial presentation. Should be dated today. Underscore, underscore, actually.
Oh, underscore.
Initial underscore. All right. That's Nicole's computer. It's not on there. Well, gee whiz, this is embarrassing. They were the best slides I ever put together. All right, all right, give me another minute. See, that's where.
While he, excuse me, while he's looking. April eighth, I'm going to bring in, since Volunteer Week is in April, I'm going to bring in two of your longtime volunteers. Who have recently gone off boards for plaque presentations. Just. Yes, and we are working on a. Little surprise for the rest of your volunteers.
I hope it's worth the wait. All right, that's it. That's all we got. So the American Rescue Plan was enacted into law and on March sixth. It's one point eight eight trillion dollars, and of that money, of that amount of money, one hundred and thirty point two billion is divided between cities and counties nationwide. So it's nineteen thousand cities, I think there's about three thousand counties. What's interesting about this is that it's a it's a direct allocation to the communities, meaning it's not going to. The state, for example, to be funneled through us, they will, it will go to the state, but it's federal funding coming from the feds to the town. The state has no authority to change the amount. It's best to be used for one time expenditures because it's a one time allotment of funding. It's not programmatic. Mills River's allocation, the estimate as of today is two point one seven million dollars. We won't know exactly until the Treasury Secretary releases all the hard numbers, but. The League of Municipalities, the American League, National League of Cities, and several other authorities believe that the estimates that were provided. Are spot on because it's based off of a formula of myself, your population, and the share of the funding available. So that should be what we end up getting. So I take full credit for plagiarizing the American Rescue Plan Act presentation from the National League of Cities. They, Council McCaskey and I sat on a call with Land of Sky last week, and then earlier this week, we sat in a presentation with these folks. To go over the American Rescue Plan and what it means, how the money can be spent. So. Okay. It's the first time in the history of the government that everyone is, every municipality across the company, country is getting a direct payment. From the US Treasury Department. All towns, cities, villages are entitled to get the money. And the money cannot be mingled with aid to state or county governments, so there's no risk of. Someone above us, whether the county or the state withholding funds because it's a direct obligation to the communities. And that's backed by statute. That's not just guidance. The recipients, as in local governments, can transfer funding to things like nonprofit organizations. Public health benefit corporations who are in the transportation business, especially use permit, excuse me, a special permit, unit, purpose, unit of government. What should be like a water authority, a sewer authority, a fire district, something like that. There's a couple of restrictions on it. You can't use it for pension funds, which is not a concern for Mills River anyway. The state cannot use it to replace revenue decline resulting from tax cuts. Enacted since March of this year. And then there are some requirements, of course, because it is federal money in terms of reporting and tracking that we'll have to keep up with. I kind of already touched on this a little bit. There's sixty five billion going to municipalities, another sixty five billion going billion going to counties across the state. The money will be coming out over a two year period. Fifty percent of it is. Tentatively coming out this this summer in June. The bill was enacted on June, excuse me, March eleventh. And the Treasury has sixty days to get the money to the states for allocation, and the states have thirty days to get it out to municipalities and counties. So that's put just around mid mid June for the for the first half of it. And then the second half of the funding will come out twelve months after the first half is provided to the town. And the good thing about this. Act as opposed to what came out in the CARES Act, obviously, it's a larger, larger sum of money, but also. We have a deadline of December thirty first of twenty twenty four. To spend the funding, and that was part of the challenge, you remember, with the with the CARES Act was that it was two hundred and forty thousand dollars that we were eligible for. With approximately three months to figure out how to spend it and and local government, that's just not. A lot of time for us to be able to mobilize and get bids and and not only spend it, but the work had to be done by December thirty first. This does not have that same stipulation until twenty twenty four. This is a big question that everyone everyone's asking right now, and unfortunately, there's really no guidance yet, because the Treasury Office at the federal level is supposed to provide this within sixty days, so looking at mid May for that. But basically, there's there's four distinct categories for local government. There's a slew of other expenditures as part of this bill, but just speaking strictly for local government. To respond to the public health emergency. Negative impacts, economic impacts created by COVID nineteen, which could include assistance to households, small businesses and nonprofits. Or industries that have impacted like tourism, travel and hospitality. And that the the one bit of guidance they offer is it's likely to be no more restrictive than the CARES Act, coronavirus really fund from last year. The second category of eligible expenditure is to respond to workers performing essential work duty. Those specifically dealing with the public health emergency. They could be entitled to increased hourly wage. Leave that's capped at twenty five thousand dollars. But that's, that's the second category. And then the third one is the provision of government services to the extent of reduction in revenue. Basically, what that means is. For places who have their own water and sewer systems like Hendersonville or Shelby or people who have their own electric systems in their town. And the bills were on hold because of the governor's orders, they could replace whatever revenue that they were not able to to capture from that time. And then also people who just weren't able to pay, the town can can use that money to to refill its. It's missed, it's lost revenue. And then the big one is D, which is make necessary investments in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. Which is about as broad as a category as as they can provide, make investments in this something. That's where we really need to wait and see what the guidance from the Treasury has to say is broadband, just high speed internet access, is it can be used to provide other services such as cell communication in some way? Can you match funds with that to do something else? No idea, and no one knows at this point. We've asked several different sources. It's just the guidance has not been provided yet. I've already said this, but. The important, important thing for now is just to understand that the money is becoming available on relatively short notice. You know, this is expected in June, which is just over a million dollars. We don't know if it's going to be coming in the form of. A check for one million dollars, or if it's going to be coming in the form of a reimbursement for eligible expenditures. That's all yet to be determined. And the second allotment will come twelve months after the first allotment. So at this point, there's no action to be taken. I just want to publicly make you aware that this is out there. And it's a good opportunity to start thinking about how we might utilize this this funding. This is. Likely a once in a generation or once in a lifetime opportunity as far as the level of funding from the federal government. So it's it's really, we need to figure out how to best utilize that to benefit the citizens of Mills River, and so. If you know of businesses that are really hurting, you know, it's it's possible the town could could do, put something together where. They help offset loss revenue. If you know people who are struggling, lower income and have housing issues, that's likely to be a qualifying expenditure. If there's a program that the town wants to do. You know, something related to the pandemic, specifically related to health. There's some, there's some inkling of of information out there about being able to use it for Parks and Recreation. Items like greenways because those are healthy alternatives to traditional indoor gyms to get people outside. We just don't know really at this point what the money can be used for, although it's safe to assume anything related to reacting to the pandemic would be covered, such as. You know, the touchless plumbing fixtures or additional hand sanitizer, but. Two million dollars to buy a lot of hand sanitizer, that's probably not the wisest investment.
So Daniel, did you say, one of your first statements was it needed to be used for one specific thing, one particular thing? One project, or can it be split up a bunch?
It can be split up as as much as the town has the capacity to support.
Okay, thank you.
Just to tack on to what Daniel was saying, I had a very nice conversation with a woman named Rose from the League of Municipalities yesterday. And I was telling her that one of the the real needs in this area is for internet broadband. And she said that they are working actively to get in front of the legislature in North Carolina, because. As we know, currently, right now, it's illegal for municipalities to cut their own deals on broadband internet. That's a state controlled function, and they are looking to lobby legislators. And to come up with a fix for that, so that if the town chose to go that direction, that we could do that, but she felt fairly confident that. Anything parks related, anything AV related, if we wanted to upgrade the the cameras and microphones and that sort of thing in this room. Expand this room, make it larger, things like that. You know, one time expenditures, we'd be pretty safe doing that, so.
Another line on the budget, probably to have this account with money.
I have had a conversation with our accountant about this already, or auditor. The monies will come in under an existing line item, this in revenue for federal restricted funds. As to how we spend them, we're waiting on and whether there'll be, what type of line items we would end up with. We're waiting on a little more guidance before we can really see. You know, it's possible. You know, it's possible we'd have to set up a project fund because it's multiple years. It's possible that it's just like we did with the CARES Act, in each department, we set up a special line item to track those expenditures so that then we could fund those lines and it not impact existing budget. So we, we kind of, we don't really know yet.
A lot of unknowns.
There are a lot of unknowns. Yeah, I, I thank you, Council McCaskey, for that information with, from the league. That is, that was another one of the expenditures that we feel pretty confident about, that if we wanted to get a little bit better camera setup in here, whatever the case may be, again, that's a direct response to the pandemic and getting more people access to public services and local government.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
All right, council comments?
I got one. Sue, in, I've been thinking about this, as we move closer to the adoption of our comprehensive plan, I think we've all seen the land use map that was in that. And for me, there's, there's one area that's kind of a glaring concern. And I would like to see us put forward a rezoning request to the planning board at their, I think it's their 20th, 20th meeting to, for them to make a recommendation for us to rezone the parcels on the south side of Schoolhouse Road that are currently light industrial and that we return those back to MR30. And then we would probably also if. Yes. Schoolhouse and Banner Farm, there's several parcels that are currently zoned as MRLA, and I would like to make the motion that we return that to send that to the planning board to have them consider to return it to MR30. Yes.
No, I got you. I'll second that.
All those in favor of requesting the planning board consider rezoning the parcel? Say aye.
Aye.
Vote, any opposed? No.
Can we go ahead and say the public hearing?
I think.
So I'd like to make a motion that we set a public hearing for that matter at our April 22nd meeting. I'll second that.
All those in favor of setting the public hearing date for that rezoning, April 20, 22nd?
22nd.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Other council comments? Did you hear any more on that today? Your, the violation of the.
Yes, there, there were some concerns about the impact to the property and being able to comply with the ordinance. And I spoke with them about the existing structure there and told them that unless there was some provisions adopted that would allow that to continue, it would have to be brought down and give them a deadline for that. And I noticed a violation, this has been prepared. It will be in the mail soon. Yeah. I know that. Understood.
Was that the April 20th or April 6th Planning Board meeting? Just clarifying, I got a text, I thought, I wrote 20th, okay.
Second.